Good evening. This, the forty-first meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all phones and put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be divided by...
Josh Teransky.
Josh Teransky. After that, we'll do the pledge allegiance.
Would you join me in a word of prayer? God, thank you for the city of Baltimore and the thousands of lives within its borders. Thank you for the businesses and the homeowners that are paying their taxes. Thank you for the nonprofits that are striving to help make this city a better place. God, we want to thank you for the councilmen and councilwomen who lead Baltimore City. The Bible says that these councilmen and councilwomen govern with an authority that you have appointed. May their leadership reflect your priorities of justice and mercy, flourishing and growth. Would you grant them wisdom from above that is pure, then peaceable, gentle, willing to yield, full of mercy and good fruits, without partiality and without hypocrisy? God, you can number the stars, you know the hairs of our head, and you know when a sparrow falls to the ground. And you know how the policies formed in this chamber will affect the residents of Baltimore City. Guide the discussions and the policy process. Demonstrate your care for individuals through the leadership demonstrated here. And finally, we ask for your gracious care for the weak, the vulnerable, and the poor in Baltimore City. Help our neighbors who are suffering, protect the weak, lift up the poor, and give justice to those who are being wronged. We humbly ask for your presence to be in our midst. In the name of your son, Jesus, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We want to thank Pastor for the invocation. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. This evening, we welcome Ava Pipitone, Executive Director of the Baltimore Transgender Alliance. Go ahead.
Thank you. So my name is Ava Pipitone. My pronouns are she/her, and thank you for having me today. The Baltimore Transgender Alliance has a very simple mission: to unify, reclaim, and empower Baltimore's transgender communities. Because our community is divided just like the larger community: class, race, education, ability. All of these factors are barriers that we must overcome so we can heal. And in the trans community, we talk about collective healing. And after collective healing, during collective healing, and through collective healing, we can move towards collective action, as we might see a little bit of tonight. When I say the word reclaim, everyone in the BTA means something a little different. So speaking as a white trans woman, I'm talking about reclaiming transgender. Because when you think of that word, I'm not so sure we're thinking the same thing. Because I'm thinking of business owners, entrepreneurs, nonprofit professionals, mothers, fathers, parents, artists, teachers, the next generation. I'm thinking trans is beautiful. And when I say empowerment, first I mean whatever I say I mean. But more specifically, we're talking about intergenerational trust. When I was handed this organization by Brianna Jenkins and Monica Yorkman over four years ago, that was across a bond of trust. And now, we foster through mentorship and through care for our elders, that very same bond to continue this movement into the future. We're also talking about building spaces for trans men so they can see each other. Sometimes they just see a beard and think another guy, but there's more to it. There's more visibility necessary for trans men. And we think of our city, Station North and beyond, we think of our street economy, and we think of survival. I know that we need the individuals most affected by survival-based sex work to be involved in discussions about policy that affects their lives, the lives of my family and my siblings. And even more, when I say empowerment, I'm talking about building. So as we build this next generation of leaders, of trans innovators, we're no longer knocking on the doors of those in power. We have built power. Last year, we had over 500 trans folks in the 2640 space. In November, we have over 15,000 trans folks now in our city. We are building power. We are a real demographic. Now we are the power brokers. And we're also building new tools specifically for housing. Because over 76% of trans people in public services such as shelters or transitional programs are attacked, kicked out, harassed, or worse. And I don't know another trans woman who hasn't taken in a sibling for a couple nights on her sofa, because that's how I'm here. That's how my family's here, and that's how we are continuing to build this movement. We are doing this work ourselves. So we're building new tools, like Host Home, to lift our community and stabilize our own. So when I say unify, reclaim, empower, I'm talking about trans is beautiful, trans is powerful, and most importantly, trans is right now in Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you. It is the Council custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Costello. All of whom favor to generalize the invocation, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. This motion is adopted. Bill to be introduced.
City Council Bill 18-0276, lactation accommodations in the workplace. For the purpose of requiring certain employers to provide certain lactation accommodations, including lactation breaks and locations, and to develop, distribute, and implement certain policies and procedures for providing these lactation accommodations, establishing minimum standards for lactation accommodations, defining certain terms, providing for certain exceptions, and authorizing certain waivers or variances under certain conditions, requiring employers to maintain certain records, prohibiting retaliatory or discriminatory actions against persons exercising rights under this ordinance, authorizing the adoption of administrative rule and regulations to carry out this ordinance, providing for administrative and judicial review of and remedial relief for violations, imposing certain criminal penalties for violations, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the required provision of certain lactation accommodations for employees, sponsors, Sneed.
Please note that Council President Young is a co-sponsor. Can I say all councilpeople? Can I say all councilmembers? Okay, all councilmembers. Chair recognize, Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, everyone, for your all support on this. Parents, moms shouldn't have to decide between work and feeding their children. And so, this bill basically says that we support working mothers. I wish everyone had colleagues like I had who understand and are gracious enough when Ray is here and when I was pumping, and they would hear the machine, that business went on as usual. You know, you would walk into my office, and I would say, "Do you mind if I pump, and do you mind if I keep on going?" And everyone was gracious enough, even as guys. So I appreciate that, and I wish every woman had a workplace that was as gracious as the men and women that I work with here at the city council. And so, I hope that you all will support this bill, and thank you to all the moms who stood behind me and the dads as well in reference to this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. This has been assigned to the Labor Committee. You can find the consent count in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is the motion approved? The consent count moved by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor approve the consent count, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion carried, and this count is approved. Chair recognize, Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to extend floor privileges to my special guests.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those favor and extending floor privileges to the guests of Councilman Bullock, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it. You can bring your guests to the floor.
The folks I'm going to bring up to you really don't need much of an introduction, but I'm very proud to have Ms. Ernestine Shepherd here and Mr. Chauncey Whitehead. Many of you know that I am a runner. I ran a race this weekend. I pretty much run every weekend. And when I'm not doing a race, I'm actually training in Councilman Pinkett's district at Druid Hill Park. And so, on those Saturdays when I'm out there, faithfully, we see these two along with other members of the community. It's a fantastic feat to recognize them for five straight years and sixty straight months. They have been there, rain, sleet, snow, hail, sunshine, and it really is a testament to their commitment, not only to a personal level of physical fitness, but also to inspire the community. I also look at this as such a beautiful thing, given the generational equity they're passing along. So I will be 40 this year. We have someone who is twice my age, who doesn't look a day over it. She is known across the world from the Guinness Book of World Records and her bodybuilding and fitness routines. And then, Mr. Whitehead is known, not only locally but nationally, as a physical fitness trainer. So if you're trying to get in shape, he's the one to do it for you. So we wanted to make sure that we recognized you here today. And so, we do have some resolutions that I do want to read to you, and I would love to have a couple of words from you, because both of you are just so inspiring for the work that you do. So they both read the same. I'll read this. The City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be hereby known to all, the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Ms. Ernestine Shepherd in recognition of the fifth year and sixtieth consecutive monthly Baltimore Community Walk at Druid Hill Park. The entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented on the sixth day of August 2018. Signed by our President Bernard C. Jack Young and myself, Councilman John Bullock of the Ninth District. Thank you so much for your service. And Mr. Whitehead, yours reads exactly the same. Again, the City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be it hereby known to all, that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Mr. Chauncey Whitehead in recognition of the fifth year and sixtieth consecutive monthly Baltimore Community Walk at Druid Hill Park. The entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented on the sixth day of August 2018. Signed by our President Bernard C. Jack Young and myself, Councilman John Bullock. It's so well deserved, and thank you so much.
Thank you so very, very much. I would like to first say that I am 82 years of age, and I found that walking was one of the most beneficial things to be healthy. So I decided with another friend, Faith, that we would start a walking group on Saturdays. Don't you know, we started off with 100 people, and then it grew. And I tell you, we haven't missed a Saturday, as you've said. And I am absolutely nothing without the love of all of you, and I always like to leave with this: for beautiful eyes, always look for the good in others; for beautiful lips, only speak words of kindness; for poise, walk with the knowledge that you never, ever walk alone. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mama. I would like to say thank you, Councilman Bullock, and to the whole City Council for inviting us here. But without the community, we would be nothing. So I would like to please acknowledge Dr. Mullins. If you could please come up, Rhonda. They have become our permanent partners, Dr. Mullins of University of Maryland Patients' Program. Rhonda, come on up here, please. This is very important. We have some other community walkers that are in the building. I just want to say to the whole council, we're here to help you. We decided that, you know what? There are a lot of different health disparities in Baltimore, but what can Ma Ernestine and I do about it? A quick story. One time, she was out, I think in California, taping the Steve Harvey Show or something like that. She didn't get back in town till about 2:00 a.m. in the morning. I said, "Mama, we still going to do the walk?" She said, "We told the community we were going to be there, and we're going to be there." So 6:00 a.m., we're out there in that park during the walk. But I really wanted to thank Dr. Mullins, Rhonda Silva, the University of Maryland Cancer, Breast Cancer Program, Cancer Program. They have been out every single walk with us, too, coming out. And if everyone that has come out to walk with us, if you could just stand up. Valerie, you've come out, you've guys. We want to thank the community for coming out, all of you guys. We really, really appreciate it. And I end with, we're here to help you. Faith, she was here at the initial walk. Please stand up, Faith. Thank you. She came out with the initial walk. She's come up from DC. And last, on the good note, around the country, Councilman Scott, we have had people fly in from Michigan, Atlanta, California, and around the country, community walks have started because with Ma Ernestine and I have started here. There's a community walk in Lansing, a community walk in Atlanta, Georgia, a community walk in Los Angeles. So we want to say thank you for this award, and we accept this on the behalf of all of Baltimore City. Thank you very much.
Very fitting. Very fitting. I would just say this, you know, as I said before, you're a real inspiration, and I love that it's at all different levels of age, but also ability, so you can walk, run, stand, do all those things, but it's all in the spirit of community. So you're very much appreciated, and my sons who are here, and they're trying to keep it together, but I want to show them and show other generations that what's possible if you put the work in. So thank you so much. Thank you so much.
We invite all of you to come out and walk with us anytime you'd like. Thank you. Chair recognize, Council Vice President Middleton.
So, Mr. President, I move to extend floor privileges to your special guests from the thread.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All of whom favor extending floor privileges to the guests of Vice President Middleton, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Your guests may take the floor. We'll move along, and we'll go back to it. Come on, guys, we've got to get this stuff right. These are your guests, Councilwoman. For Coach Family on behalf of Black Classic Press? That's not me, that's her. It is an honor for this body from time to time to have the opportunity to recognize ordinary citizens who are doing exceptional work in our city. Today, we have the privilege of lifting up the awesome work of Thread, a nationally recognized and Baltimore-based nonprofit that works under the thurig, that empathy and enduring relationship are our society's most essential form of wealth. Thread's mission of cultivating relationships that go beyond race and class has a long track record of success. Thread's innovative approach to helping the most at-risk high school students have been written about in national publications from Forbes to the Wall Street Journal. And several weeks ago, David Brooks, an award-winning columnist with the New York Times, wrote about how Thread provides the architectural for kids' success, and what a success it has been. Since 2004, the Thread community has grown from 15 students and co-founders to 255 students, their families, and over 800 volunteers, and over 175 collaborators. Thread's primary goal for the future is to maintain exemplary outcomes and support as many students as possible, as quickly as possible. Please join me in honoring the exceptional work of Thread, its army of volunteers, dedicated staff members, and the students who have been transformed. Here to receive a resolution from the City Council is Sir Heminger, co-founder and Chief Executive Officer of Thread.
Congratulations.
You can read it, sir.
And we present this citation to you. The City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be it hereby known to all, that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Thread in recognition of the nonprofit Thread's continued mission of fostering positive outcomes for underperforming high school students in Baltimore. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on this sixth day of August, signed by President Bernard C. Jack Young and all members.
Ms. Heminger, if you'd like to have some comments, you can. But before she has some comments, I want to tell her how I found out about her. I was reading a news article, and I seen something about Thread, and I read her story about what happened in her hometown. It's a very interesting story, so if you could get the New York Times and look at that story, it was very inspiring. She went through a lot after some things that happened in her town, and she felt isolated. And she felt so isolated till when she attended Johns Hopkins, she felt that she wanted to reach out to kids who had similar backgrounds as she had, where people isolated them and thought, you know, different things about them. And she started this organization. I was really, really thrilled about it. I told Lester, "Hunt her down, we got to find her and get her in here and thank her for a job well done." So again, thank you.
Thank you very much for this acknowledgement of everyone in the Thread community, our young people and the adults, and the fact that everyone spends so much time building relationships across lines of difference, which is really hard and messy and takes a lot of time and work. I don't think I could be prouder to be a Baltimorean. My one failure in life is that I didn't go to high school here, so I can't claim that I'm truly a Baltimorean. But my one source of pride is not only that all of our Thread students are Baltimoreans, but my daughter will go to high school here, and so at least she will officially be part of the pack. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. We'll get a picture real quick. And if all the councilmembers would like to join in this quick picture.
Chair recognize, Councilman Scott.
Mr. President, I move to read short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of short titles for the remainder of the meeting, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. We do short titles. We'll now move the bills on second reader. Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0271, Charter Amendment in Alleibability of Sewer and Water Supply Systems.
Chair recognize, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before moving the bill, I'd like to defer to you for comments.
You can go ahead.
At this time, I move the bill favorably.
Second by Vice President Middleton. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Chair recognize, Councilman Costello.
Mr. President, I move to invoke Council Rule 12-1 to move City Council Bill 18-0271 to third reader at the same meeting.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor, we're going to do a roll call. Roll call.
President Young?
Yes.
President Young, yes. Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen, yes. Councilman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Scott, yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey, yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilman Schleifer? Councilman Schleifer, yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
So?
Yeah, the Councilwoman has to recuse herself.
Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett, yes. Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock, yes. Councilman Risinger?
Yes.
Councilman Risinger, yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Costello, yes. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes, yes. Councilwoman Sneed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed, yes. And Councilwoman Clark is absent.
The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Council Bill 18-0271 is on third reader. Third reader, requiring invocation of Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement.
City Council Bill 18-0271, Charter Amendment in Alleibability of Sewer and Water Supply Systems. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed.
And please note that Council Vice President Middleton has to recuse herself. This bill is approved. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 17-0134, City Streets Opening, North Castle Street and Four Alley's of varying widths, line between East Eager Street, North Chester Street, Ashland Avenue, and North Washington Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0135, City Streets Closing, North Castle Street and Eight Alley's of varying widths, line between East Eager Street, North Chester Street, Ashland Street, and North Washington Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0136, City Streets Opening, Portion of Proctor Alley. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0137, City Streets Closing, Proctor Street, a Portion of Proctor Alley, and a 10-foot alley line between East Biddle Street, Homewood Avenue, East Chase Street, and Greenmount Avenue. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0164, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single-Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance is 2240 East Baltimore Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18-021, Aid Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single-Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance is 807 North Monroe Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18-0219, City Property Naming the Fire Station Located at 5714 Eastern Avenue to be the Constantine Preveast Fire Station. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18-0239, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single-Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance is 1613 West Pride Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18-0253, City Property Naming the Footbridge Over Stony Run to be the Amy Mickel Footbridge. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed.
This bill is approved.
President Young, oh, sorry. City Council Bill 18-0259, Fire Code, Repealing Appendix D. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18-0266, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Fire Department, $4 million. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two six seven, City Property, Renaming Lindhurst Elementary Middle School Building to Wildwood Elementary Middle School Building. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two six eight, Ordinance of Estimates Fiscal Year 2019, Capital Contribution to the Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for Fiscal Year 2019. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two six nine, Resoning Fifty-six oh one Eastern Avenue. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill eighteen dash oh one eight nine, Thursday, September thirteenth, 2018, 10:00 a.m., here in council chambers. And it's the Short Term Residential Rental Regulation and Taxation.
Any committee announcement? Chair recognize Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill eighteen dash zero two seven zero on September twelfth at 1:10 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a planned unit development designation located at fifty-six oh one Eastern Avenue. The committee will also hold a work session on Bill seventeen dash zero one zero two, which is Complete Streets, on September nineteenth at 1:00 p.m. in the council chambers. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero one two two on September twenty-six at 1:00 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a rezoning located at one North Haven Street. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill eighteen dash zero two five six on September twenty-six at 1:05 p.m. This is a zoning. It's a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a three-dwelling units in the R eight zoning district with variances located at seventeen forty-seven East Lombard Street. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill eighteen dash zero two zero three on September twenty-six at 1:10 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a zoning. It's a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a three-dwelling units in the R seven zoning district with variances located at three oh one East Twenty-eighth Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any more? Chair recognize Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has already been announced, but just a reminder that on Monday, August thirteenth at 5:00 p.m., Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on eighteen dash zero zero nine one R, Budget Oversight Hearings for the Baltimore City Police Department at the request of Councilmember Pinkett. That will be a televised hearing.
Thank you. Chair recognize Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, immediately following the Budget Committee's hearing on Monday at 5:00, the Council Public Safety Committee will hold its first council stat with the Baltimore Police Department.
Okay, thank you. These are regular announcements. First of all, I want to recognize Senator-Elect Joe Carter. Would you please stand? And congratulations. Councilwoman Vice President Middleton, for a moment of silence, can you put down Molly Jordan? Chair recognize Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I ask that Council Vice President Middleton honor a moment of silence for the now one hundred and seventy-one victims of homicide in the city of Baltimore in 2018 and their families, in addition to all those that we've lost this year to the opioid crisis as well.
Thank you. Chair recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also ask the Council Vice President to do a moment of silence for Tyrone West. Since our last council meeting, Thursday, July eighteenth, was the fifth anniversary of the death in custody of Tyrone West, who died during a traffic stop in East Baltimore. His family has not forgotten and still seeks closure. And so, the council should remember his passing.
Chair recognize Councilwoman Snead.
I know this is not normally said, but can we think of some of our community members who experienced some of the shootings in the neighborhood and the trauma? Like, we, I think we forget about residents whoever, who actually live in the communities, who are fighting to keep it safe, but feel like they aren't heard. I mean, I've just, I just got a lot of phone calls this week. So, please add them to the list of their neighbors.
Any more? Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, September seventeenth, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. And may we have a moment of silence for Tyrone West, the fifth anniversary in death and custody, and also Ms. Molly Jordan and family, and also the one hundred and seventy-one victims and their families of homicide, and also the continued opioid epidemic that we continually have in this city. May we remember and have a moment of silence for those families, and also the residents of our neighborhoods that continue to experience just crisis and death and many crises that we have throughout this city. We need a strong moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. There have been no further business. This concludes the forty-first meeting of the Seventh Second Term of the Baltimore City Council. For the council members that are still here, I think the mayor is still swearing in the Women's Commission. If you could run down there right quick. It's finished.